In the words of Councilwoman Flores, everybody's time is important. So let's start with introduction. I don't know if everybody knows everybody.
Jason Sayers, Public Works Director.
Len Trot, Fire Chief.
Lisa Gummer, Salt Director of Finance.
Christopher Janis, Inspector of Erie Police.
Renee Lebas, Chief of Staff.
Okay.
I'm Governor City Controller.
Okay.
Jasmine Flor, are you a city council person?
Chuck Nelson, city council.
Tyler Tyneson, city council.
No, with his own city council.
Mo Troop, city council.
Kathy Schaaf, city council.
Okay, welcome, everyone. Let me set the table. The most important thing today is finding the dollars to fix the roof at the Miller property. That's the most important thing. Secondly, where will the money come from? That's the discussion. I don't want to drift off into anything else. We're talking about where the money. We know it's important. I support it 100%. But where the money come from? Where it does not hurt the citizens immediately or in the near future? So Renee, I'm gonna throw it out at you and others could join in.
Okay. Do you want a recap on the Miller Brothers project or we don't need that?
Let me ask council.
Do you want to just go right to the finance questions or what do you want to do?
If we could do a recap, I would, yeah.
Okay, recap is good.
Okay, we're prepared for that. So a lot has happened since we presented to you last. So we'll kind of go back to the beginning a little bit just to kind of reset the stage for what got us to this point and then update you on what's currently going on. And we're gonna kind of tag team this, but I'll start off. You know, this all started back in October of 2021. Several of you were on council at the time and we realized that we had some structural issues related to Marsh Street and that we were gonna have to get out of that building as soon as possible as we started to do the analysis and the research of the situation. You know, the Bureau of Parks was in the basement. The fire mechanics, of course, division is on the first floor. And structural engineers noted cracking of the floor, which was never intended to sustain the kind of weight that is, that the fire trucks of today bear. And so there are, there's cracking that you can see that's visible from the basement as well as from the first floor. And Chief, I don't know if you want to provide a little bit of information regarding the restricted use areas.
Once they determined that we had structural issues, they started coordinating off where we could put fire trucks and where we couldn't, which is a problem with the size of the trucks and the fact that there's only certain places inside the building where we can tilt the cabs to do work on them. So we've been adapting and overcoming as best we can. We had, we're limited to one truck, fire truck, inside at a time, which is a problem when we have more than one truck that needs serviced. The, they had us move into the middle because there were people in the basement still and they didn't want anything above them. They have since moved the Parks Department out and they put them in an office trailer up in the back of the lot. And now they wanted, they had us move back to the side because it's the stronger part of the building. But they have noticed in steady deterioration of the structure. Our next step is, we had, once we moved, we marked out where the weight-bearing areas were gonna be on the floor. And probably next week, the structural engineer will be back to show us where we have to put steel plates to disperse the load to get us by until next fall, which is, according to the architects, about as fast as we can get into Miller Brothers with the renovations. So it continues to deteriorate and continues to pose problems and challenges, but we're working through it, but we can't slow down.
Okay, thank you. And there's no question about the need based on what you told us. I believe all of us is aware that the need exists. Again, I want to talk about where we get the money from. Because if we don't find a place, all the problems you're dealing with will not go away. And I'm concerned, especially with the workers, where they are, it could, ceiling could cave in and then we're in big trouble.
Yeah, as you know, we did move the Parks employees out of the basement and Jason can speak to that.
Yeah, that's correct. We, like Len indicated, we did bring in an office trailer. We have an existing pole barn towards the south end of the Parks complex and we've mobilized an office trailer and that happened last year. And so the Parks Department has been working out of the trailer for offices and then out of the pole barn.
They would eventually be potentially located in Miller Brothers as well in Phase Three. But Phase One, which we began working on, is to get the fire mechanics out of Marsh Street as soon as possible. And as Chief mentioned, you know, there are, there are other challenges with Marsh Street related to ceiling clearance with the new fire trucks. They're so much bigger than the older ones and there's not even enough room to lock the cabs into place when the mechanics are working on them. So it's a really unsafe situation. And when they're working on the tower truck, you can see what they have to do to just get the, the tower ladder in to work on it.
Any questions so far from council?
I have to reiterate what the President said. We all know that we have to do something here.
Yeah.
Let's talk about the money.
Okay.
Because the rest of it, how about asbestos? Have we talked about asbestos in that Miller Brothers? Is that part of the quote for the new roof? Or is it all removed?
Jason, you want to speak to Roth Mars and the asbestos environmental?
Yeah, they completed, yeah, Roth Mars, they completed a Phase One environmental. They had a subconsultant come in and, and do that. We did a walkthrough last week and so asbestos is a, is a concern in the building. They did identify some areas. There's gonna need to be further, I guess it was testing of those areas to determine the extent of that. I would say they also identified a possible lead paint in the building as well, but again, further testing is needed. So that would be, that would be additional. But beyond that, at this point, they didn't include any specifics because they don't have that at this time.
So that would be additional money other than what's being asked right now?
Well, that would not, that's not part of the roof.
That would be part of the entire project, but not part of the roof. They, they did identify some sources of possible asbestos and lead paint, but they weren't concerned that it was a lot. They thought it was relatively small area and it was easily handled, so it wouldn't be, they didn't do, the rest of the building is a different story that they'll have to test and all that stuff. But as far as the area we're talking about now, it is a, it's a small amount of asbestos, possibly. They haven't tested. They just did a, you know, a walkthrough and identified areas that are likely to have asbestos and lead paint.
So with the money asking for is strictly for the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
That is just step one of Phase One.
I guess I'm concerned with the fact that right now we have to put the new roof on and we have structure issue, structural issues such as the weight and the foundation of the building not being able to hold. So how are we gonna prevent anything from?
The structural issues are at Marsh Street. The roof is at Miller Brothers.
Okay, so the Miller Brothers ground is okay?
Yes, there's no basement under the area of Miller Brothers where the trucks will be. It's concrete on, on the ground.
Okay, so it's, that's why we're in the rush to get out of the other building?
Right, so, you know, after we went through the feasibility studies and the spatial analysis and we ended up purchasing Miller Brothers in November of 2023, it was just over $2.8 million. And at that time, we had a cost estimate that the entire project was gonna cost about $30 million, which is still in the ballpark as we are going through now doing the design and the final, final analysis. That will start to become clearer as we move forward, but we're still in that ballpark. So Miller Brothers is where the roof is needed. And I can kind of just fast forward here to show you, and I can go back anytime you want me to, but this is the, this is the plan for Miller Brothers. So Phase One that we're working on right now where the roof is needed is the orange area. That's where the fire vehicle, fire mechanics will be located. And so because of the urgent need to get them out of Marsh Street, that's where we started. Phase Two would be the purple area in the front, the Emergency Operations Center. We have grant applications submitted for both of those projects right now. And then the rest of the facility would be Phase Three, the blue areas. So the, so right now, we're working with Roth Mars on the design of that Phase One piece, that orange piece. And they're estimating a total cost of $9.5 million. But because of the roof, they want to build, bid that part of the project now. So I can show you, in case you haven't been to Miller Brothers yet, this is the space that we're looking at for Phase One.
Yeah, that's, that's Phase Two.
Well, this is part of Phase One.
There is Phase One, yeah.
So you can see that the fire trucks fit much more better. We don't have issues. The floor is fine. It's structurally sound. But what we do have, and this Phase Two is the Emergency Operations Center, that we can get federal funding for from the Department of Homeland Security and we're, we're working on that. We almost had it last year, but then all the congressional appropriations were wiped out countrywide. So we were asked to reapply. There's a lot of detail here on that, what I said. We can always go back to if you want me to, but let me get to the phasing here. It's gonna take a minute.
And just, you know, the roof was always needing to be done.
Right.
It's not, it's not something new that just came up. The roof in that section and the rest of the building has always been in part of the plan.
So that's the, those are the three phases. The $9.5 million total for Phase One. Phase Two was originally estimated at $10.3. We have not been the design on that yet because we're working on Phase One first and then Phase Two, or Phase Three would be estimated at another $10 million. So then in terms of where the funding comes from, what we were proposing was that we take the 4% from the water reserve from 2022 and 2023, which hadn't been taken yet because that is specifically restricted for capital and really won't have an impact on the taxpayers. That's funding that we could have taken and didn't. Whereas other funds that we have access to are unrestricted and can be used in a lot of different ways. So if there are emergency needs or if we needed to help with balancing the budget, whatever comes up, we can use other funding sources that we have, that we have, but not the water reserve funding. That can only be used for capital. And Lisa can speak to some of those questions that you had regarding the numbers, but they're all in the packet that she provided as well.
Any questions from council?
I just want to make sure I'm following the timeline correctly. So we purchased, we've known though since like '21, is that when it first with the, just the bad conditions of the current, like Marsh, right? And then in 2023, purchased this building. What happened between that time to like right now where we came to the urgent part of it? I understand like the need, but like how did we get to like the point where we're like, we have to make a decision right now?
So we're, we're constantly doing crack monitoring on Marsh Street and it's getting worse.
Okay.
So as Chief mentioned, we're at the point now where we have to buy steel plates and install those on the floor of Marsh Street to absorb and disperse the weight from the fire trucks. So it's, it's gotten much worse. And the, the issue right now with the million dollars is that the part of the roof at Miller Brothers collapsed over the winter. And so that needs to be closed up before the next winter comes, which is why Roth Mars wants to break that piece off and bid it very soon this summer so that we can install that this fall to protect it from the elements.
Can you refresh my memory? What was Miller's asking price and what did we pay?
Asking price was $3.1 million, I believe, and we ended up paying just under $2.8.
Knowing that we had to put a new roof on the place?
Well, we, that was always, we always knew that we were gonna have to do that. We always knew that the project was gonna be, because we did that cost estimate in the beginning, that it was gonna be around $30 million. So the part of the roof that collapsed is a part where two buildings were joined together and the weight of the snow caused the collapse. It would have to be replaced, no matter what. We were always gonna need a new roof.
Was there an environmental study done on this part?
Yes, the environmental.
Just, just recently.
Okay. Could I get a, could we, could we send that out? I don't know, maybe we do, do you have it?
Because we have that. I have, probably have to do it on digitally.
That, which is great. That'd be great, yeah.
Because it's very lengthy.
Thank you.
And I think another part of your question is, once we noticed the problem, we started looking for a place to go and what we were gonna do. Then we had Bostwick do the two studies, which took time. And then once we bought the building and, you know, we've been talking to representatives and looking for money, bought the building, still talking to people trying to come up with money. And then we had to plan it all out, put out, go out to bid, you know, all this stuff. So now that we've finally gotten all that stuff done, we're moving along. And they would like to go out to bid for the roof before the end of this month so they can have it on before the end of the year so that anything else, any other part of the project, doesn't have to be held up because of the roof. They'd like to go out to bid in late August, early September for the rest of the project.
Yeah, so the first Bostwick study was done in June of 2022. And that was to kind of do a spatial analysis to make sure that the building was feasible, that it was structurally sound, that everything would fit. So the architects looked at Marsh Street and everything we had there and looked here at some of the things that are here that would move in terms of the police department, looked at other, some of our other buildings where we had things because this, this building, because it's 120,000 square feet, will enable us to consolidate a lot of city services in one place, which will save us, which will save us money in the long term as well. And then the spatial analysis, the cost estimate, the project design study, that was all done that summer. And then in 2023, we did, we did the, that initial design that has the map with the purple and the orange and the blue to figure out where everything would go. And that's when the entire project was slated for approximately $30 million. So we've been working on this throughout as they've been monitoring the cracks. And, and then, you know, after we had that study done, then we moved to secure the funding and purchase the building.
For my clarification, Phase One is the roof?
No. Phase, Phase One is the, that entire area for the mechanical division of the fire department. The first part of Phase One is the roof.
Okay. And Phase Two?
It would be the Emergency Operations Center, which will have the other part, the other warehouse and that area with the green carpet where the showroom was at Miller Brothers and the parts room. There'd be an Emergency Operations Center there and training rooms for, you know, any of the, if there's an emergency, if, when the police do operations with the FBI and the drug task force and all that stuff.
Now, once the roof and Phase One is completed, are there costs built into the original request or that's gonna be additional request Phase Two and Three? Or are there grants out there to handle Two and Three?
We'll be building a capital stack for each phase, which is why we broke it up into three phases. So for Phase One, we currently have a couple of grants submitted for a million dollars. It's possible that we will then, we can, we can also do a section, HUD Section 108 loan. We can get 1% municipal loans. We have the...
The State Fire Commissioner has some low interest, I believe they're 2% loans for capital projects.
So you said 2%?
What's that?
You said 2% loans from where?
The state, from the, through the Office of the State Fire Commissioner.
So how?
That changes constantly. So, you know, once we're ready to do that.
How close to the $9.5 million are we for Phase One?
I mean, we're, we're working on building the capital stack right now.
Do we have a million, I mean, outside of the roof? Like how much realistically do we have or are we gonna be trying to find the money for that Phase One?
That's what we're working on right now. We have some grants submitted, but we are waiting on those. The process hasn't completed yet. And then once we know, then we can go after the loans.
Len, when the governor was here at the fire station, he talked about putting money into the state budget. Can we get some of that money for the Miller Building?
That's in his proposed budget for 2026. We can definitely and will, if it goes, if it gets passed with the budget, we will definitely apply.
Based on some of the decisions made on the federal level, what do you think or how do you think it will affect grants, specific grants that we may be seeking?
Well, for, for the EOC specifically, we're able to get funding through Department of Homeland Security. Last year, we had applied. We had the support of all three of our US representatives as well as Pima and FEMA. You have to have approval to be able to apply for that funding. Like I said, everything was wiped out, every, every single project for congressional appropriations. Our representatives reached out asking us to reapply because they think it's a really good project. Once again, everybody's on board. We have Pima, we have FEMA. So we're, we're pretty confident, but you know, you don't know, we won't know until spring of 2026 for sure if we're able to get it. There, our request is for $3 million. Last year, it had made it all the way to the final stage.
Any other questions from council?
I was wondering if we could get money from ECR. One time I was asking them for money for a roof for a different project, totally. And they said, is it a historic building? And they were asking me some questions. And this is a community resource building and it is a historic building, even though it may not be designated as of yet. I was just in Wilmington and they saved some of their older buildings and repurposed them. And it takes up a major area and it's really cool. So I'm, you know, just putting that out there because this is a community need. It's not just a, you know, one little issue. It's a community issue that we take care of, the police, fire and public works. Same with Community Foundation and, you know, anyone else who we get some support from.
We'll definitely be looking into that.
What do the architects say about Marsh Street? Like what's the length of time that can continue to be used? If, if no money was available, we had to continue to, what would?
They said that we have to put the steel plates down to get us through till next fall. So we're working on that, trying to get that done. With the steel plates, he said it'll get you through till fall, maybe a little longer. And after that, it's anybody's guess. It just depends on, as, as things get worse, that compounds and, you know, things get weaker. So they're not willing to say, well, you've got two years or three years. They just say, you need to figure something out and get out of here. But right now, we're at the point where it has, we have to put the plates down to get us through.
But Chief, you've been living like this for the last five years, right?
What's that?
I said, you've been living like this the last five years. That marsh is not, didn't deteriorate yesterday, okay? It came in for us yesterday because we need money for a roof. But we knew about Marsh Street. I knew about it a hell of a long time ago.
We've been actively monitoring it by our structural engineer with the crack monitors, like Renee already mentioned. So what he's doing is he, he reads those and monitors them at least once a month, if not more frequent as needed. And then he meets with us regularly and tells us, you know, if anything's moving and what adjustments that we need to make. Leonard, I talked about that, the shifting of the truck and shifting of the truck again. And now the next part is the steel plate to disperse the, the weight. I will add that a lot of that, back to, there was a slide that showed how there's limited head clearance in that building. And that's a lot of the problem here is there's not a lot of room to move the truck around to get the clearance. So what you end up with is, there's not a lot of places to put like jacks and outriggers. So the steel plates go down to essentially disperse that load rather than having those point loads in, I'll just say, places where you don't really want them. So that's really the reasoning behind the steel plates. And, you know, we're, we're gonna move forward and do those soon.
The emergency really is that because of the deterioration, they want us out of there by next fall. The, the emergency situation with the one, with the $1 million for the roof is yes, we need to get that on by the winter, but all of Phase One needs to be completed by next fall so they can vacate that building.
I don't think anybody up here is against having this happen.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if everybody's in line with the way we're trying to take the money. Maybe move on to that part.
That's a good point. We've, we've got in the background, we've received the emergency of the requests. I, along with council, believe that it must be done. Not that it should be, but it must be done and it should be done prior to the winter months. And based on the latest weather reports, we don't know when winter gonna come. It's been pretty cold lately. Let's talk about money. Now, administration, you've requested, what, a million, a million plus from the water reserve for capital improvement. Is there any other place we can take that money? Is there any other place we can take that money from versus touching water reserve, which we're doing pretty good right now on interest? And Chuck, if you wanna chime in, you, you're my finance director.
Yeah. I mean, Water Reserve Fund, we've, we've restricted that in the last four years. You know, this is an account that, that was invested. It's one of the two different types of accounts that's allowed to be invested in equities between that and pension. So that account was started and invested in 2010 with a little over $5 million in that type of investment when we moved it from PNC. We've taken about $4 million out since then, so the balance in 2010, in January, was 5.3 million. We've taken about $4 million out since then, and today, the account's 17 million. So if you're doing that math, that's a really good returns. This is the last money we should be touching in the city ever. This is why my own personal financing, I've got a couple thousand dollars in my checking account, and everything else is in equities. Like, that's, that's a responsible thing to do. This is an account that grows. It is restricted that we can only use it on capital expenses. We also understand that we have $4, $5 million a year in capital expenses we could be spending. I mean, between paving alone, there's a lot of money to be spent on capital expenses. This account could have $100 million in it before we really had to worry that we didn't have somewhere to spend it. So this is, this is the last thing we should be touching. Counselor Titus had sent a list of different areas to identify. Jumping ahead of you, but this was a, we didn't address the ARP interest, which should have enough money in it to cover this. That money is unappropriated and unanticipated. Sure, it's a little more flexible, but I assure you that we could, we've always got enough expenses to shuffle things around and, and make this water reserve money available. You know, this is, this is something that we should be holding on to as tightly as we can, especially when there's money in, in water, you know, in the, in the ARP interest account, which is what I'd asked for, I think, two months ago when we were discussing this. So I'm, I also want to remind everyone that the water reserve account, as it has been established, requires a supermajority of council to take a withdrawal from, meaning that three members can shut that down. I don't think it's gonna be a divisive vote. I think that this one's pretty easy. And I think that we'll be needing to take this from the ARP interest, or that's what I would recommend, unless you've got a better suggestion. Either way, I would suggest that the water reserve is not available for this, from my personal perspective.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that from administration?
I'd just like to say that as capital expenses go, this is a true capital expense. This will be here 40 years from now. Other capital expenses, in less than 10 years, you're doing them again. So if you're going to take money from the water reserve, this is the project to do it on, something that's going to last.
My question is, is there enough money in the ARP to do the project? If not, can we use the ARP and take the balance needed from water reserve?
Can I clarify? Interest, ARP interest?
Interest, yeah, I'm sorry.
There's about $1.2 million in ARP interest. Now, having said that, since we have not been able to draw any money from this water reserve account for the last four years, I've been scrambling, trying to find different places to fund capital from, and this was pretty much my last pocket of cash to fund yearly capital budgets with. And if you recall, our capital budgets, when we bring them to the council during budget season, we normally have upwards of $3 million in our capital budget, and we end up having about a million dollars to fund it from one source or another. So all year long, we watch that budget, and we only replace things that are on their last leg or broken down already. So, it's, it's a kind of a precarious way to, to run our capital budget. So, yeah, we, we do have that 1.2 million, but I was hoping to stretch it out over a couple of years to fund capital with, because we can't guarantee having six members to transfer this money from the water reserve fund, even though it was set up to fund capital.
And I'll say, this isn't the only capital project we have. Police, public works, we all have other capital projects that need to be done. So it's, you know, those projects, like I said, aren't the project to take this money from the water reserve. If you're gonna take it, this would be the project to do it, 'cause it's a long-term project. We, like Lisa said, we have, there's other capital that needs to be done also, and that wouldn't be, those wouldn't be the projects that you would take.
So, let me, let me remind council a little more context. We have not taken this money, so we allocated some money from this, but it hasn't been taken out, right, Lisa?
Correct.
All right, yeah, Teresa, yeah. So, since I've been on council, we have not taken any money out of this account. That's been a very intentional thing. My first day on council, this account had $12.6 million in it. It's now up to 17. That means that we've grown, we've seen this account grow by $5 million in the last three and a half years. This is what pays for capital. Now, when I was, when I graduated from college, my student loans were 2.7% interest, right? So if I had money in the bank getting 5% interest, I wasn't gonna take that money out of the bank to pay off a debt that was only 2.7. I looked at that as a free 2.3, you know, 2.3% interest that I was getting. Like, that's what we're up against on this. If, if Len tells us that we can get a 2% interest rate to do funding of fire department maintenance, then, then we take that money before we take the stuff getting a 10% gain in each of the last four years. Like, if we can issue a bond getting 6% for capital, we do that before you take this money out. Like, this is a, a matter of a difference between what the expenses are and what the earnings are. We will always earn more in this account. This is the last thing we should be doing. In the meantime, the ARPA interest, the ARPA interest, is, is unanticipated, unallocated, and covers this entire amount.
The, the 2%, 2% loans that I talked about aren't, they aren't guaranteed, and there's, there's a window, you know, it's almost like a grant. And we need this money now to get the roof done so they can bid it, get the roofing material ordered, and get it on before the end of the year.
Yeah, and let me be clear, I have a solution for now. That's the ARP interest. I'm talking about what's, what I hope council will take into consideration. I'm out of here in six months. I wanna make sure that I say those things before I go. This, this is a long time of spending money on this, I'm sure.
I mean, I just like, for the record, to, to note that this was prepayment money that we got for 30 years. So I think that the residents of the community, taxpayers deserve to know that this-
It's, you're talking-
This is the sewer money, that, this is the sewer-
No, no.
No? Okay, so, wasn't-
Can I explain?
Go ahead.
This is a, this was created in 2001, and it was Water Authority lease payment that was taken and put into this sinking fund. You're right, Chuck, eventually, originally, it was invested in the Pennvest funds, and then it was moved to the, the investment fund. Now, that was, there, there's, in your packet are a couple of ordinances that, that show you the establishment of the fund and what it was to be used for, and the rules governing it. All, all of that is in the packet. The water lease prepayment is something altogether different. It's, we, we made a deal with the Water Authority, and they prepaid 30 years' worth of their lease payments. The lease payments were about 3.7 a year, and that came right into general fund revenue. We used, we got $96 million out of that, and we used 78 million, 79 million almost to defees debt. So, that, we, we also gave 2 million to set up the Business Development Fund, which is a revolving loan fund Chris Groner manages. And we ended up with about 15 million that we were going to use to not raise taxes for the next. And it was only supposed to last till 23. Well, since we didn't have to use any of that money in '23 or '24, we've still got 6.6 million left in that fund. But 4.2 of it, 4.3 of it is already budgeted to use for 2025 budget. Now, if we have a good year again, and we have, and I'm gonna say, a lot of that, those surpluses over the last two years were because we had so many gaps in our labor budget, and we had two really decent winters, other, other than Snowmageddon. But we didn't use all of our overtime budgets. So, I wouldn't feel comfortable tapping that for this project. But the Water Reserve Fund, like I said, was established for this, and if you look at the, I, I studied the performance of this fund from the time that we stopped taking money out of it until the end of April, and I saw a $700,000, $800,000 gain in, in a four-year period. Now, we just gained another $700,000 from April 30th to May 30th, but the market is really volatile. Over those four years, we had a year where we made, where we made 20%, and we had a year where we lost the exact same percent. The third year was in the neighborhood of 12%. Fourth year, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but overall, we, we, up until, if we would've had this meeting last week, I would've been telling you that the value of that fund is 6% higher than it was when we started. So, none of us have crystal balls. We could lose money on this, we could gain money on it. I, I can't fathom this quadrupling in the next five years. I, I mean, the rule of sevens.
Can we get back to-
Usually it doubles in about seven years if you've got it invested well. So, and this is a conservative, the, the rules for investing are kind of conservative. So, that's, that's just my two cents on the investment side of it. Does that help?
No, because the interest is the same thing with the ARP money. All the funds are going this way or that way.
Yeah, well, the interest is still at 4.5%.
I don't know if I'm reading the room right, but either you folks aren't listening, or we're not hearing, or something, but I don't think you have six, six votes up here to get that money out of the water. So we gotta go someplace else, because we have to get that money. So let's do it, if we're gonna do it tomorrow morning, we'll waive the rules and get it done.
We have the other option on the agenda. We have both options on the agenda.
But the sad part of it is, when it first started, it was intent and purpose for capital projects only, and that's what it was made for. I wasn't on council at the time, but it's like a person doing their last will and testament and then having generations later saying, "Oh, he didn't mean that."
Follow-up question, follow-up question would be, was the ARP money slash program available when Water Reserve was in action, when we had Water Reserve? It's been around for a while, and what you're saying is probably true, 'cause that's all we had to work with. Then the ARP came and monies became available to use it for capital replacement.
We can only use it like that for a project, and it, we're not asking to take the whole thing out of it.
Understood.
Just, you know, the money for this project.
So, may I, may I also, may I also define that, though? That, that restriction isn't because city council once upon a time determined that restriction? That's a restriction that the state has to qualify this as a sinking fund. So you're only allowed to take it out with capital expenses. However, I also want to point out how this is funded. This is only, as an, as a, as a fund, is, can only be funded by selling capital assets, which is why it started when the water department was sold to the Water Authority. All right? So there's no way to replenish its funds. We couldn't have used ARP funds and then replenished the sinking fund to make it amazing and make it last forever. The only thing we could do is let it grow in the market or sell an asset. That's the only way we can make this account grow, to cover capital expenses in the future. So as long as we have the resources to not take out of it, I would recommend that. Or, in the future, if we have the opportunity to sell assets, which obviously we don't, we don't, we haven't made a lot of profit selling assets in the last 30 years.
But things go up and down, like, some, I can't even look at my 401K sometimes because I'd lose money.
That's across the whole board, Cap.
I know. Well, that's what I'm saying, though, but, so, I, I know.
So-
I'm just different.
Yeah, so I mean, 77% of the time, the market's gonna go up, like, from a year-to-year basis. And as Lisa had pointed out, the rule of seven, that you hope it doubles every seven years, right? So we started with an account that had 5 million in it. We've taken 4 million out over the last 15 years, but we've had two years, two sessions of a year seven, and it's quadrupled.
But who do we have running our country right now? Like, you don't know. I'm sorry to bring him up, but we could be in World War III.
If we are, then none of this matters.
Yeah, we're, we're well invested in military at that point.
I think we're digressing a little bit.
Yeah, well, sometimes it's good to get a little laughter.
I mean, if we, if we don't have the six votes, we don't have the six votes, but we just, we wanted the opportunity to explain why we thought that was the best place to take it from, and the fact that we have so many capital needs right now because there's so much deferred maintenance that has just been neglected for so many years, because the funding just wasn't available. You know, we're gonna have, you know, another 8.5 million that we need to spend on Phase One. It's just, this is the first, you know, this is the first piece of Phase One that needs to be, that needs to be completed to protect the asset, and we would prefer to take it out of the Water Reserve Fund, which was set up for capital, but if we don't have the six votes, we don't have the six votes. The project has to be done.
I guess with the long list of capital projects that we do need, that's why I'm in favor of leaving the money alone and letting it grow, just because, remember the presentation we got a couple months back about all the, you know, deferred maintenance and all the projects that we're gonna have to do in the coming years? It worries me to use the bit of money that's growing, just because, you know, some people might not have the sight to see the next 10 to 20 years of projects that we might have. I need us to make sure that we're thinking big and bold and making sure that we have a way to grow interest as we have been doing the last two years. That's over a million that we were able to grow from that account, so I think that if we can use money from elsewhere, then that's the conversation we need to be having.
I think that maybe you're including in that calculation the repayments that were made to that fund from the loan that was taken out by your events, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's not interest, that's an all-interest.
But again, it's only a 10% growth from the time we stopped taking payments till now. The value, the total value of that account is 10% higher. That's, that's a lot of time. It's three and a half years, and it's 10% higher.
The point I made earlier is if we spend all this ARP money, there are other capital projects that need funded. And as we continue to kick the can down the road, which is how we got in this situation with kicking the can down the road for years and years, then as that account grows, so does our capital needs. So, yes, the account could grow, but so are our capital needs. And is that account growing faster than our capital needs? Or are we just waiting five years to fund our capital needs, and it's a break even? You know, we're not talking about zeroing out the fund. We're just talking about taking two payments that we normally would have been taking if we didn't do this different investment.
I mean, I think, for the record, needs to be noted that if we did take the money the past years, it wouldn't be there now, to use now. So, because we have held off on using the funds and found money elsewhere to plug in, you guys now want to use the money to fund the roof. So, you know, I guess we just have to be honest about how we move money around when we need to, and then find money when we can. So, I think if we can use the ARP interest money to fund the need, then that's the direction we need to move in.
And just to follow up on what you said, if we would have been taking those dispersments, we wouldn't have some of these capital needs, because that money would have been taken out for capital. So, I see what you're saying, but on the other hand, it can go one way or the other. Some of these capital needs would have been taken care of. This capital need would still be here, but some of the other ones wouldn't. As I said, we all have a whole list of capital needs that we keep pushing off.
Well, this became a new capital need when we acquired the building in 2022. So, it was a new project that we prioritized.
And we have been working on it, but it, there's a lot of painstaking steps to get to this point.
I think I can say that the project, the roof, will get done. We would have to decide, if it comes out of the water reserve, we're going to need a supermajority. That's six yes and one no, or one, I don't think anybody could abstain. So, it would be a six yes votes. And if that doesn't go, then we have to look at the second option. It must be done for the safety of our fire department and police department. And you mentioned that there are additional capital improvements that's going to come along. I suggest, if there are some in the harbor now that you know is going, give it to us. You know, police department may have something coming up, and it may not transpire for a year, but give it to us well in advance, so we know that here are six capital projects that's coming up. And those who are still on council will have it well in advance, but let's deal with today.
Here you go.
Mr. President, so, for tomorrow morning's meeting, do we, 86, number one, the first reading? Or are we going to go through the whole process of voting one down and...
Well, let's, let's go through the process.
We're in the time, I'm the sponsor, I just...
Both of them?
No, the second one's good.
Yeah, the second one we want, yeah.
We don't have to vote for the first one. It's up to, it's up to the president, I know, for him on that, but we can just vote privately.
Same for sake of unity, we're all in favor of getting this building fixed. How we get there is, we're arguing about...
And it was purchased in 2023, not during my term on council.
Okay, is there any other concerns from council?
I don't know if you would like the police department just to touch on our immediate needs for the building itself, just to recap for council members that are newer, if there's any desire for that.
No, we voted on taking money out of the capital fund for you guys. I didn't even fight about that one. Love you.
I can do that briefly, if you would like.
Okay, we'll close this.
I guess we don't need it yet.
I guess not.
6:26 PM, we'll close the study session.